Welcome to the Dougherty County Board of Commissioners meeting with your chairman, Christopher S. Cohelis. Your commissioners include, from District One, Commissioner Ed Newsom; from District Two, Commissioner Victor Edwards; from District Three, Commissioner Plinton Johnson; from District Four, Commissioner Russell Gray; from District Five, Commissioner Gloria Gaines; and from District Six, Commissioner Anthony Jones. Also joining us is your county administrator, Michael McCoy; Assistant County Administrator, Scott Addison; County Clerk, Jawan Ware; and County Attorney, Spencer Lee. Thank you for joining your Dougherty County Commission meeting.
All right. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Let's go ahead and call to order the Dougherty County Work Session for July 12, 2021. Note for the record that all commissioners are present and in person. This is a work session. Let's begin with the minutes. Minutes of the June 21 regular meeting and June 28 special call meeting. Any comments, questions, or discussion there being. Now we'll now move on to delegations, and I'm going to begin with this very special delegation that we have. I'd like to call upon Ms. Shereen James if she would step forward, and we have a special presentation that we would like to make. We have a few commissioners to order.
Hey, you're welcome.
Good morning, Mr. James. Nice to meet you. All right. Well, on behalf of Dougherty County Ward officials, I'd like to present you with this. Whereas our cherished friend and community servant, Joe James, was born June 22, 1934 at Bayington, Georgia, as the late Deacon Hubert James Seaman. This is Owling James, and after living a full eighty-seven years of life in this earth, passed away on June 26, 2021. Whereas Joe James was influenced early in his life by a strong religious belief and brought to every decision a sense of fairness which made his counsel both sought. Whereas his early religious experiences directed him to follow in his father's footsteps by serving as a deacon, a Sunday school teacher, and wherever he was needed as a member of New Salem Baptist Church in Bayington, Georgia. Whereas Joe James's education included attending primary school at Bayington and graduating from Madison High School in Albany, as well as graduating from Albany Technical College of Electrical Engineering. Whereas his education served him well as he pursued his vocation for thirty-five years of Western Councilor. And later became an instructor at his alma mater, to Albany Technical College, where he served as board trustees for many years, during which time he was an instructor of Electrical Engineering at the Lee County Correctional Institute, Monroe Area Vocation School. And whereas during these years at Madison High School, he excelled in baseball. Soon after graduation, was drafted by the Kansas City Mariners Negro Baseball Club. And instead of accepting the offer enlisted in the United States Army. And after his appointment at Fort Jackson, and then to Korea, in an honorable discharge, he returned home to marry the beloved wife, Shereen Wright James. Whereas that wonderful sixty-two-year relationship with his devoted and beloved wife, is summed up by Mrs. James in the following poem titled, "My Soulmate." "God was making husbands, as far as I can see. He made me special soulmate, especially for me. He made a perfect gentleman, passionate and kind. With more love and affection than you could wish to find. He gave my darling husband a heart of solid gold. He gave me wonderful memories only my heart could hold. He was someone I could talk to that no one can replace. He was someone I could laugh with till a tear ran down my face. Next time we meet will be at heaven's door when I see you standing there. I won't cry anymore. I'll put my arms around you and kiss your smiling face with pieces of my heart to fall back into place." Now therefore being resolved that I, Chris Perez, could meanest on behalf of Ward officials of Dougherty County, wish to express the ward's deep sympathy for passing Joe James to his devoted wife of sixty-two-year Shereen Wright James, his three sons Edgar James, Tucker James, and Lionel James, his two daughters, Margaret Fredericks and Deborah Simon, his sister Laura Wilkins, his sister-in-law, Evelyn James, his twelve grandchildren and his seventh great-grandchildren. Our ward knows that Mr. James lived his life in a manner such that his friends could defend him but never had to. Remove the clerk of Dougherty County to award this in memoriam on county minutes of permanent tribute to Joe James, since the twelfth day of July, 21, signed, Chris Perez, could meanest on behalf of Ward officials. Thank you so much. Thank you for sharing. Yes, my pleasure. Thank you. All right. Next, Mr. Forgie, Director of Planning and Development Services, President to update the commission on citizens' concerns regarding businesses located on Ponceana Avenue. Morning, Mr. Forgie.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
So I wanted to address you about the issue on Ponceana. Just generally speaking, personal care homes like this are allowed in the county in residential districts by right, so without any permission from the planning commission or the county commission. They do have to get a business license, so they do have to follow some rules. We put this process in place to make sure that they have a state license, so we don't have unlicensed facilities out in the county. And in order to get a state license, they have to show the state that they can operate locally. So they have to show that they have a business license locally. This particular property can operate legally because it's operating with four or fewer people in a residential area. There has been a little bit of confusion that we're trying to sort out. It was, it appears that it's never been granted a business license previously. It's been in existence for several years. I don't know how long, but for, it's been in existence at very least predating your ordinance. So in general, that would allow it to continue without meeting the rules of the ordinance because it's been in existence, but it appears that it did not have a business license. So one thing that, the process of getting a business license now requires that they present a parking plan, and I know parking has been an issue with this particular facility. So we are going to ensure that they present that parking plan, which will give us something to require they adhere to. So at least the parking cannot be a nuisance. The point of, well, maybe not the point of, but one of the points of allowing businesses like this in residential areas is that they look like a residence. So we want to regulate those impacts that don't look like a residential use, and parking, excessive parking certainly is one, although you can certainly have a neighbor that has lots of cars and parks them wherever they want to. But this is a requirement of the business license. Another requirement, which they have not met, so they do not have a business license currently, is an inspection by the fire department. The fire department looks at businesses like this to make sure that they're operating safely and that their residents are as safe as they can be. I don't know what their rules are. I don't know if it requires sprinkling, but I know it requires a fire inspection, which they have not gotten. So this is still in process, but we are going to make sure that, at very least, they have the fire inspection that they pass and that the parking plan is turned in and they adhere to that.
So I have a couple of questions.
Good one.
They've been here for how long?
I'm not certain of that. We have...
More than a year?
Yes. It appears that they've been in operation since 2018 at least.
Okay, so for three years, they've operated a business in a residential area without a business license?
It appears that way.
That, and I don't, like, this isn't a criticism, but that seems to me to be unacceptable. Like, that's an unacceptable result. And they're continuing to operate today, but they still don't have a business license?
That's correct.
Is that legal?
I, if those things are true, which I believe they are, but I don't operate business license, so I can't say with a hundred percent certainty, but yes, if they do not have a business license and they are operating, that is illegal.
So what's the remedy for that? Like...
If that's the situation, the business license office would go out there and tell them they have to shut down or get a business license immediately.
So that seems to be the logical next step?
Yes.
So who from the business license office would go and make that visit?
Well, the marshal, Marshal Norman is working on it. He's aware of it. So he's looking into it personally.
I understand, and I appreciate the fact we're getting some scrutiny on this, but there's a reason why I'm asking very precise questions. So we passed an ordinance after this business, which doesn't have a license, started its business in Dougherty County, which require, which makes, places certain requirements on personal care homes, right?
That's correct.
What are those requirements that went into effect?
Okay. Well, there's numerous ones, but for ones, a personal care home like this one, if it were coming to us, asking if it could get a business license at a certain address, we would check, the first thing we would check to see is if there's another similar type use. We call it community residence, non-traditional, single-family. So it includes a lot of different things other than community, or other than personal care homes. But if there's another one of these within a thousand square feet, or a thousand feet, it's not allowed to go in that area. They have to be a thousand feet apart. So my understanding is there is at least one more closer than a thousand feet. So if this address came to us after the ordinance was established, we would say you can't establish at that, that address because there's another community residence too close.
There is one. You're saying there is one?
I believe there is another one, but because they...
But does that one have a business license?
I do not know.
This is, and none of this is a criticism. This is, I think, more of a comment on the nature of the business that we're seeing here in terms of personal care homes. Like, there are personal care homes that operate perhaps on a higher level of like the medical sophistication level, and then there are some that operate more at, farther at the other end of that spectrum.
Right.
And it's of significant concern to me for a variety of reasons. One, I prosecuted a lot of elder abuse cases when I was in the DA's office, and these personal care homes, and I'm not saying this about this business, but they can be, they can be certain when certain folks are not morally scrupulous, are running these types of facilities. They can end up being a very easy way for the elderly to be taken advantage of, for the social security checks to be signed over, for medicines to be withheld, et cetera. And I just, it's extremely concerning to me that we have, like, we don't have a sort of a universal view or a ten-thousand-foot view of how many of these sorts of businesses we have operating in the county, and they may or may not have a business license. So that's just a comment, and none of that is a criticism, and we've got great folks working for us. I'm just, it seems to me to be something that needs to be looked at significantly. But if they never had a business license to begin with...
There would be a de novo application. There'd be a new business, and they would be subject to...
That's exactly where I'm going in my mind. Like, I don't, and I could be wrong, and perhaps this is for an opinion from another attorney, but it's like, you don't get to, you don't get to get grandfathered in when you were bootlegging your way in in the first place. You understand what I'm saying? Like, you were operating illegally in the first place. You aren't really a business. You didn't subject yourself to the application process. So I have a hard time believing or accepting that there's sort of an ex post facto or some sort of constitutional right to avoid. But I would like to know the answer to that.
Yeah, but I think when we did it...
I'm sorry. I've heard from two different...
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Commissioner Gaines?
I'll submit to it.
Yes. Mr. Forgie, can you tell us if there is any policing requirement, either in state law or in local ordinance for these kinds of facilities? Are they allowed to, once they have their license, they're allowed to operate without any oversight?
By policing, do you mean the police or by oversight?
Clearly oversight. You know, I'm sure they are subject to the laws that the police execute.
Right.
But I'm talking about, you know, policing is in a broad sense.
Right. Yes, they are required to, well, again, if this came in as a new application and they did everything right, they submitted a site plan, parking plan, we knew everything about it, they got their state license, proved that to us, they would be required by both us and the state to function within what they said they were doing. If any complaints came in that they, the neighbors said that they're doing things that aren't in accord with their plan, that would be something that we could then have code enforcement address. The state does inspect these facilities. I'm not sure on what schedule, but the state does look after them to some degree.
Yeah, that's, I suppose that's the part I'm really curious about is whether or not the state actually has oversight of their operations.
Well, they do, but I would expect it's probably not as frequent as we might like.
No. It's an unfunded mandate. Got it. An unfunded mandate. It's like the hope and a prayer philosophy.
So they, they don't have like routine visits or...
But based on what Mr. Forgie's saying, and just based on some general experience dealing with state government, I doubt that they are checked very routinely.
If they did, I don't think they would check for a local business license.
Right, which helps them...
I understand that would be our responsibility, but if, if people are coming and going in a manner that is not acceptable to state laws, and people, you mentioned that they could be taking advantage of folks there. I'm just curious if there is a mechanism that would police what they actually do in their operations.
I think it's a great question and point, and step one is, to the extent you can get them on the grid by actually having a business license, which is sort of, from my perspective, the most sort of infuriating, and I don't mean that, like, I'm not angry at anybody. I'm angry at the situation that, like, this thing could have been going on for three years, right under our noses, and never been subject to any scrutiny from a business level. Like, that's, that's maddening to me. And, but that happens, and there are, frankly, I, there are a lot of businesses in town that operate off of the grid. Anyways, Commissioner Johnson, you have a question. Commissioner Edwards?
Oh, yes, sir. I think what we, going back to when we passed the ordinance, I think Mr. Forgie need to, what it was, we allow with four people or less. That's really the kicker right there, because our ordinance allows four people or less to be in a residential home. And I think you kind of explained it. Only thing I want to piggyback on is, when you say they have to give you a parking plan, I don't know how we can do it, but I would just want to be able to encourage that, that they park in the backyard. So going forward, I would like to see us, I don't know if we can rewrite that ordinance that we adopted, where somehow they have to, because we have three, I have three of these particular homes in District Two, okay, and they are, what, a thousand feet apart? But we missed it because they didn't have to come before the board. Because of the way the ordinance read, four people or less, you know, that's kind of how it slipped by us for some reason. So going forward, I'd like to see that if all of their staff have to park in the backyard, no front yard parking. So I don't know how we need to structure that, and that's what I kind of come and say with you on the phone.
To your point, Commissioner Edwards, I have...
Since four or less...
Yeah, I'm arriving at a different conclusion, which is, how does, how does this business exist? How does it continue to exist? And I'm guessing some, a lawyer for...
They didn't have to come before us, because, explain that again to me, Mr. Forgie.
What I'm saying is a little bit different, though, Commissioner Edwards, and it's an agreement. It's actually, my, my view may be more harsh than you realize. What I'm saying is, you didn't submit, you didn't have a business license in the first place. Therefore, you didn't have a valid business. Therefore, your business did not exist. In reality, in any, like, you didn't have a property, you don't have a property interest for a business that operates illegally. I don't, I can't accept that, that you have like constitutional rights and accepted that, that allow you to be grandfathered in. That's like saying, in my mind, that, you know, a guy that has a bunch of potatoes and moonshine still has, you know, a property interest in running the illegal moonshine operation. Just, to me, that's a problem. So like, but then their business exists presumably within a thousand feet of another personal care home. Like, I'm curious to see like how this is going to get sorted out by the marshal's office by doing anything other than, hey, close your doors. Like, I'm really curious about that. I could be wrong. Maybe I'm being too harsh, but that's, for someone to hold themselves out to take care of, these are, these are older folks, correct?
I'm not sure of their clientele.
Or older folks, or folks that certainly are in some sort of vulnerable state. They hold themselves out commercially in our community, take people in and receive money, and they do not have a business license. Like, that is massively infuriating to me. Massively.
The fact remains that if they had a license, they don't have to, they can adhere to it in the first place, but they could still do stuff that is not within the provision of the license if there's no policing requirement in there. You issue the license and you let them go. They can operate in whatever manner they want to because no one is required to go in and inspect and police. So the license upfront three years ago does not say at all what they are doing today, or does not, if no one has eyes on them.
But it's like...
And there's no provision in there for oversight.
Yeah, but I think they have a state license. They just didn't have a local license. Correct?
Right. But it's just like, if you want to sell beer, and you want to pour beer at a restaurant or bar, you pay for the state license, and you submit yourself to the local government for the local license. And everybody, like, that, like, this is not a lemonade stand. Like, I mean, this is, we're not talking about... Like, this, I mean, this is, we're not talking about folks that don't have a level of sophistication. That's just incredibly infuriating to me, if it really is.
And, and, and you're right, Mr. Chairman, and, and it doesn't make sense and I'm, I'm having a hard time with this. This is something similar to what we had a couple of weeks ago with this bidding type thing. Our folk didn't know they didn't have a license. Uh, they, they, the folks who operate know they didn't have a license, they knew they were bootlegging, but, but, but this is, you know, we got a system that's broken and, and we need to fix it. I mean, I, I understand, I can't sugarcoat it like this, but I'm just telling you, that system is broken, needs to be fixed and, and I'd like to hear what we're going to do to put in place something. I think we need to go out, uh, uh, if this is possible, I think we need to go out and inspect all these homes that are doing this and, and you just need to inspect all of it and see if they're in compliance or not because number one, this, this gentleman had to come in and shine a light on this thing, then next thing you know, you may have had a, you, you may have had a criminal act going on out there. So these folks are bootlegging and, and not doing what they're supposed to do, but what, what, what are we going to do to, to keep these folks? They slipped under the radar. How many more out there that's under the radar? So what are we going to, what are we going to put in place, Mr. Chairman, uh, through, Mr. Forgy's office, licensing? What are we going to put in place to say that this doesn't happen again? Because here it is, we all look like we got an egg on our face. You can sugarcoat it and say whatever you want to, but the blame lies right at licensing and, and, and the blame lies at the folks who have this home over here. But they knew they didn't have a license, but our folks, our folks should have known.
Well, it's an interesting, it's an interesting point and I'll just, just for a point of clarification, I will remind folks that we actually contract with the City of Albany for this service, uh, which, uh, over the years, I've asked a lot of very hard questions about how many businesses are offline.
Yeah.
Uh, and just so you know, it doesn't just impact personal care homes. It also impacts your sales tax collection. It impacts whether or not, if you're, if you have businesses that are operating without a business license, um, you know, not getting checked by the fire department, not, it, it, millions of dollars can be lost that way.
Yeah, it is. And we need to do something about it. I, I, I don't know what, what needs to be done, but I do know that those folks in these licensing offices and so forth, you got to have some, some type of oversight. Somebody got to go out and knock on these doors every six months or once a year to make sure to look at the license, see if they're licensed, see if they've been inspected by the fire department and whatever other regulations that we have that need to be in place. Just think how much sales tax money we've lost based on, I don't know how long they've been in, maybe several couple of years, but you know, this.
Mr. Lee.
It's terrible thing.
Mr. Lee, if.
Spencer.
If their license, if they had the license, both state and local, and if they had adhered to all of the, um, requirements at the time of the licensing, uh, they could still do what they're doing. Because we have no, uh, policing requirement at all at the local level.
No oversight.
No oversight, that's right. That's what it boils down to.
And because they're, they're not a business who has submitted a parking plan that has been approved, we have no teeth to enforce a parking plan that they submitted and agreed to adhere to. So as long as they're parking illegally based on residential allowances, which is in the right of way by the ditch, you know, they can continue to do that and be a nuisance in the neighborhood.
Uh, Commissioner Johnson, you have?
Yes, one short comment. Uh, Mr. Ford, during the, um, testimony of the, of the resident, he stated that, that he thinks that they're doing training facilities or training workshops at this location.
He's in the back.
So that automatically disqualifies, disqualifies them from being the four or less if they're doing training or they're operating as a, a, a school for, for training employees. That, that changes the entire.
I think it's four or less residents. Staff is not limited.
That's correct. And it doesn't address, uh, periodic training. I, I don't think that's uncommon, but that, that is probably something that should be addressed in the ordinance if you want to prohibit training onsite and require it to be somewhere else. But that's not spelled out.
Good point, Commissioner Johnson.
You know, having, having periodically an extra four people who are training over there shouldn't be a problem, but evidently it has been.
So, so Commissioner Johnson's raised an interesting issue, which leads me to believe that, okay, that, that means they're ultimately going to get a business license because there's going to be a way for them to operate, uh, even if they are subject to the four per, actually no, because if, if they're a personal care home and they're within a thousand feet of another home, uh, who's going to make that decision? Who will make that decision regarding compliance?
Um, it will be a combination of the, of my department and the marshal's office. We, my department would check to see if there are any other, um, personal care homes within a thousand feet. We would also check to see that they provide the information as requested in, in your ordinance.
Who's going to, who's going to make the determination as to, or the, on the analysis as to whether or not they get the benefit of being grandfathered in?
That would be a discussion with the county attorney to, to see what evidence there is.
And I, and I don't know the answer, Brad. My gut is that it doesn't seem right.
I agree.
Mr. Chairman, if you recall, this, this organization, uh, is based out of Chicago and owns two other properties in Dougherty County that they're operating. They may be subject to the same ordinance.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Jones?
You, you can't get grandfathered in if you've never been in, in the first place. So there's no way you can get grandfathered in if you've never been in.
I, I, I'm saying, I'm, I'm saying.
I know that, I'm just saying.
Okay.
I, I think it's your season to sit, or whatever.
Well, I think, I think what Mr. Forgy is very diplomatically saying is he wants to get the benefit of, of legal counsel, not just, um, myself or anyone else, you know, sort of throwing off our opinion. And I think that has to be done, otherwise you can't get into a, a liability situation. But, uh, I think that's a good update and I certainly hope, wish, expect that, um, and, and the marshal's office has always been very good to us, but I hope they will, especially here, in this instance, how important it is to bring a high level of scrutiny, um, to this situation, which is very concerning to this commission and to our citizens.
Can we please, um, ask for a review of the local ordinance to see if, uh, we need to add teeth to it in any way, just to review?
Mr. McCoy, you put that topic on the next work session and ask Mr. Forgy to be here, um, for us to readdress that issue and talk about that issue on a forward moving basis. Commissioner Gaines' point is well taken.
Mr. Newsom.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I could not see.
Mr. Chairman, there, there has got to be some state ordinances. I mean, I, we need to find that out and see if they're in compliance with the state. I, I, I know there's got to be on these type facilities, some kind of state ordinance that's supposed to follow. I mean, it's, it's got to be because, you know, when, you know, in, in, in business, when, that these things come up, there's some requirements they got to have, which is they got to have some fire, uh, they got to have some fire pool stations and, and depending on.
They got to have insurance.
Yeah, they got to have insurance, plus they've got to have, uh, you know, fire protection sprinkler systems. And so, I mean, so the state's got to have some kind of ordinances.
But that means the fire department, because, because they're not on the list of businesses, this is what drives me absolutely insane. Um, as, as the son of a, a, you know, forty some odd year firefighter, um, no, no firetruck has ever gone to this business unless it's on the list of businesses because everyone just like, fire department don't come to check my house. Um, yeah, but if it's a commercial business, then it has to get checked.
I would, I would guess that's part of the state certification. They went through that to get the state certification, but they just didn't file for a local business license.
I mean, when I say that, that is driving me insane.
We don't know if they did that. I mean, but what we do need to do is, I, I agree with what Commissioner Gaines says, is to bring this ordinance in and, and look at what's there now and, and based on the mistakes and the missteps that's been made thus far, we need to revise and, and, and look back over it and then we need to add some things in and put some teeth into these, into this organization and, and, and to this, uh, deal so that we don't get bogged down like this again. But guess what? It's losses that are coming into play with that, you know? And, and, and here we be in front of twelve in the box with anybody else.
Here's, um, here's what I'd like to do with the consensus and consent of the commission. Uh, I've placed the issue that Commissioner Gaines raised, which is a larger issue than just this one, which she's always, Commissioner Gaines is always good at raising policy issues. That, that's going to be something we're going to review. Uh, but at the next meeting, like, I want to know how this story ends, um, and what decisions were made and, you know, I, I, look, just because we have our own legal opinions doesn't mean that ours is right. Uh, you're going to have to get an opinion from the county attorney, it's going to have to be analyzed. Uh, I am encouraged to know that if they are capable of operating, then it's going to have to be pursuant to a parking plan, they're going to have to meet the fire department, they're going to have to do X, Y, and Z. I don't know what, the short answer is I don't know if they're going to get shut down or not, but it sounds like there is a mechanism to make them at least compliant with our business license requirements, which means parking plan, et cetera, et cetera. Um, and, but I do keep coming, that threshold question of whether or not they can even operate is a pretty darn important one in my mind. And it's, it becomes more and more important every time I repeat the words that they don't have a business license. Um, it just is sort of maddening to me.
They also have to have an occupational tax certificate too.
Yeah. The, the last thing I would like to add, if Mr. Forgy can, um, ask the police chief, our county police chief, to be involved in that conversation and the reason why is, um, they have had some calls to the location, but separating, I, I guess I would say the behavior calls, not the medical calls, but they have had some behavioral calls that the county police have had to come out. And I think that will play a significant role. Outstanding. One thing, Mr. Chairman, as you said earlier, I think we need to involve the attorney to make sure because like you said, we're, we're bootlegging, we're bootlegging here with, with our opinions here. I think we need to get them, get the attorney involved in this situation too and have him to look back and see what these folks can do, what, what missteps have been made so that when we do bring a plan forward, we'll have the legality just taken care of because the attorney would have had an opportunity to, to give his opinion on it and tell us what we can do and what we cannot do. And I think he needs to be working hand in hand with Mr. Forgy and everybody else so that when we come up with something, we'll have a ten step plan that, uh, that, that we'll know that's, uh, that, that, that's been validated and, and, and we're covered in case of something, see any other missteps happen.
And so I think Mr. Forgy has indicated he's going to have that conversation.
Way in from a legal standpoint.
Attorney said something.
What'd you say? Spencer, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Why?
What'd you say, Spencer? I'm sorry.
I said, uh, I'll be glad to get involved with Mr. Forgy and, uh, weigh in on this issue from a legal standpoint.
Yes, sir. Uh, we, we would expect that you would and thank you for that. All right, uh, if that's acceptable to everybody, this is going to be on the next regular, uh, commission meeting for an update from Mr. Forgy and Mr. Lee. Uh, and, uh, I thank our, our citizen for being back here present and you see we are digging and trying to get you some answers and move the ball forward. I recognize the government is slow and it is, uh, but, uh, but we're trying. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Forgy.
Thank you.
All right, any other delegations? Yes, sir. Yes, 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 sir.
I'd like to point out first that, thank you, Victor.
Appreciate you.
Back, uh, in March, uh, we did figure out that they did not have a license. Uh, I'm going to read the zoning ordinance of the City of Albany in Dougherty County, Title One. Any occupation or activity carried on within a dwelling by a member of a family residing in the premises, all home occupants shall comply with the following performance standards. This will give a little bit of insight of what we just discussed. There is no group instruction, assembly, or activity of more than two persons except up to six for a family daycare center. So that takes care of a, of a training session. No display is permitted, including merchandise commodity under articles of any kind, which will indicate from the exterior that the building is being utilized in part for a purpose other than that of dwelling or advertised services or merchandise. The day after the last commission meeting, uh, Fox News was out there doing an interview and the sign that was in front of the yard was removed. No signage is permitted to identify the home occupation unless required by state or federal licensing requirements, in which case the sign shall be limited to one foot square in size. Uh, the other residency on Cherry Laurel, they still have a sign out front at, uh, twenty four oh three Cherry Laurel. And I mentioned, I don't think they are complying with the state requirement to have fire suppression system in the building. At four ten Point Santa, they do have a fire suppression system which should be inspected. Uh, since we, uh, last had a meeting here, I have seen a state car out there and I was told that code enforcement was out there and I'm getting this all from the media. And when I was here on, uh, June twenty eighth, on June twenty ninth, I was told by the media that they did apply for a license, a county license. I don't know whether that's true or not. And last but not least, according to the zoning ordinance, no traffic shall be generated by such home occupation in greater volumes that would normally be expected in a residential neighborhood, not to exceed ten trips per day or as defined in the latest edition of trip generation published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. So that kind of covers a lot of the parking and movement of the area.
Mr. Forgy, does that ordinance that the gentleman just read, which is from the City of Albany's ordinances, is that substantially the same or identical to the one that we have?
It says City of Albany and Dougherty County, Georgia.
There you go.
Uh, that it does apply to the city and county that qualifies for home occupations and there's a list of home occupations. A group home such as this, such as this is not covered by that. There's the community residence ordinance, which we all adopted recently, so it's apples and oranges.
So I, I got you. It's apples and oranges, understood. Um, but there's still separate requirements for, okay. I, let me ask you a different question. We passed a community, what'd you call it again?
Community residence?
We did that, what, a year ago?
I think it was in January.
So prior to that, there was no ordinance, right?
Prior to that, um, it was more permissive. I think six or fewer people was allowed by right and it was, it was prohibited if it were more than six people.
So there was an ordinance that was in place?
There was not an ordinance, that was just in, in the allowable uses in residential districts. There were no requirements other than if you wanted one, then have to be six or fewer people.
Well, so what my, the point I'm driving at is, um, the component that this gentleman just read, um, is supplanted by our most recent edition of an ordinance.
That's correct.
But prior to that, this business, let, let's say it were two thousand eighteen, for example, um, all of the regulations that were just read would then apply, correct?
Um, I, I, it would take some reading and research for me, but I do not think so because the home occupation regulations give a, a list of what are, what are home occupations.
It, it, it has an exhaustive list of home occupations, such as.
I do not think group homes are.
I, I got, I got. Okay, that answers my question. Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Uh, do have the latest ordinance that, uh, Mr. Forgy gave me, referenced the county, which is a little less stringent than the city. We do not know the number of persons that are in the property that are being taken care of. We don't know. How many does it take, to take care of these people? We don't know how many's in there. Uh, there is a congestion, the parking clause here, congestion must be avoided. Uh, responsibility for maintenance. Uh, I showed you pictures in March of what the yard looked like and the ditches and the, the parking has caused, uh, deterioration of, of the yard. Lately, they have been doing some, they do the yard cutting, but the shrubs and everything have probably. uh, have probably been recently be done. Uh, there's been a lot of things been done since, uh, I came before the commission. Uh, it's gotten a little bit quiet, more people are parking in the back, and, uh, the only thing they have is their, uh, re- residency, uh, van out front, and occasionally some of the other people would come by, but, you know, this is what happened last time in between, uh, marches and, uh, last month's visit between, uh, in, before the commission. It, it comes and goes. Uh, and, uh, there's another clause, "Explain the requested accommodation relates to the needs of the disabled person." From what I understand, this is a behavioral home, and then, as I mentioned before, uh, they have escaped. They've been wandering down the neighborhood before they knew one of my neighbors. Uh, as I mentioned, uh, that, uh, 20, uh, 2403, I believe it was, uh, the one on Cherry Laurel, that I, that needs to be looked at, I've talked to the neighbors over there when I first do, did some investigation of this, of this group home that snuck into our neighborhood. And whether they're a thousand feet from each other, I don't know. A thousand feet, what's that, a one-fifth of a mile? Point Sienna, Holly, Cherry Laurel, it's pretty close, pretty close. All three of them. So, that's all I have, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All very good work, thank you. All right, any other delegations that did not pre, all right, good morning, Ms. Wright.
Greetings, Chair and, uh, Commissioners, the public. We want to address, uh, Item 7D, and we sent the information, uh, to the clerk that we would be ready for the assignment, the Commission of Gaines. Uh, we reviewed about eight local governments in the state of Georgia, not similar in characteristics to, uh, Albany, Darty County, but, uh, they are hybrid, that is, they are consolidated. But we're gonna bring that, it might make more sense to have the city and the Board of Education, uh, with us at that, and we cannot do it in ten minutes, but today, uh, we're looking at Item 7D, and it's not what, on 7D that's puzzling, it's why the disclosure was not there. Uh, on your handout, you, if you look on Page Two, the proposed budget on the general fund is fifty-five million dollars. Now, you wanna get a sheriff department, and the EMS, four and a half million dollars, that's two and a half mil for, for nine hundred people, and the African-American community aren't gonna be the one to pay that. You see, you look at 7D, it says the budget gonna increase from fifty-five million on Page Two, the top line with arrow, to fifty-nine million dollars. That's two and a half mil. That's gonna be there forever, and all those communities that we checked, all of them are growing, except us. Uh, now, one thing about Chatham County, we're gonna bring that one to you first, you know ninety percent of elected officials in Savannah are black? And that salary is sixty-five thousand dollars a year, well, we're gonna bring all that, but let me go back to what, trying to get you to understand. You, see, the thing about it is, the governmental county standards boards and the financial county standards boards require, you have to disclose it. Governor Roy Barnes put a law in place in 2002 that you cannot have a backdoor increase. What was puzzling over the weekend, when we met with the team, was why there, there was no budget amended, a proposal amended, why was there no disclosure on that? You cannot just take the public for fools. If you look at 7D, only thing it shows is the four million dollar increase. If you're not familiar with the budget, you wouldn't know the increase is gonna be four and a half million dollars. We calculate, and now, Page Three, you have the city of Albany, you're losing twelve thousand people in ten years, city of Albany's budget jumped twenty million dollars in one year. Look at city of Albany's general fund, jumped seven million dollars in one year, that's on page Four. Now, somebody is not doing something right here, when you lose twelve thousand people and then the sheriff presented a case, and you look at EMS, he presented a case, but that's one-half or one percent of the population, and it's a case of adverse impact. We had five thousand people when I worked at Firestone, I was the division chief. We dealt this thing every day. People would come, and you only see one-third of the equation, you cannot just put a four million dollar budget, because that budget, that four million dollars has to be there from now on. If, when those people, if, if, if they pass or something like that happened, then it goes into their retirement, that increase has to be there. That's federal law. We did this all the time out of fashion. What I'm saying is, if you look at that, that's why we brought the city, so you can see them. Now, somebody is not doing something right for there to be five million dollar increase overnight, and the only thing the sheriff said, and I read the article the sheriff had in the paper the other day, he said, "Well, why nobody getting all these jobs, having to hire?" I went out to full file the store, and I asked the young black man, I said, "Why are you not going to the store and get a job?" He said, "Brother, I'm on paper." That was what the sheriff was talking about when he said, "Technical reason." Otherwise, he knew he couldn't get a job, because he had some kind of probation hold on it. So it's not, they not wanna work, they know nobody's gonna get them a job, but this is why, when you look at these things where the governmental county standards board requires us to disclose what we're gonna, when we're trying to do something, and the public does not understand, you cannot just go and increase two and a half mil overnight and not have a clue. That's why I was telling you about that movie Clue, and half of the people doing this stuff don't have a clue about what they're doing, nor the consequences of those. We're gonna be paying four and a half million dollars from now on, because of what you did. Now, the sheriff made a case, and EMS made a case, but it did not happen overnight. And certainly, if you know anything about mathematics, geometric progression, it's, it's a continuum. So the things that are going down, they're gonna continue to go down. If they're going up, they're gonna continue going up. That's why your budget keeps going, because of waste, and because of cluelessness, if you don't know what the devil is doing. They're just dead because somebody helped them get a job. But certainly, you cannot justify a four and a half million dollar increase on Page Two, and not give the, the, what we're raising is disclosure. The disclosure should have been there, that you're gonna increase it, don't just throw a number out there and not give a justification for it. The sheriff says, "Well, blah, 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 blah," he put in the newspaper that, uh, having a hard time, that kind of thing. You try being black for two and a half hours, and you, you'll know something about hard times. We've gone through, what, six years of pandemic under President Obama, and then we got, it's like we're gonna have four years under President Biden, and you talk about hard times? Let me tell you one final thing. Now, you have the document there on Page Three and Four, you got the city's budget, you got yours that's proposed, but it does not show the amendments. But the thing that you have to take in consideration is this, that, there has to be some public vetting and justification. Sure, it's a hard time, let me show you. We brought to you back, I think, in February, where you were buying twenty F-150 superduties. Those things cost about fifty, sixty dollars a piece, sixty thousand dollars a piece. We told you then what you'd need to start doing, if, if you were not clueless, you would buy some of those cars with that not been titled, and you may save thirty or forty cents on the price. Now, you can ask Mr. News and anybody else in business, everything that's going by is not brand new now, and, and I know most of you may have been rich, but when I was working on my grandfather's phone, that was not the case. You, you, you had to be able to justify what you were doing, and then, one of the advertising agents had a slogan, they said, "Well, w- we make our money the old-fashioned way, we earn it." But you take a fifty thousand dollar Ford F-150, and all of this is not like those, that terrain out there in, uh, Kansas City and other places where you need a four-wheel driver. Fifty thousand dollars, it got to be brand new, and you could save fifteen or twenty thousand dollars by just changing what you do, if there was not so much cluelessness of Brown. Now, let me show you something about that. At Brown, I served on an international policy committee, and we made policy with Firestone and GM, Toyota, and all other companies that were doing work in Western Europe and the United States. I was the vice chair of the policy committee, the International Union. And one thing we had to do, we had to cross out everything, that, that, that cover, so, in the case with the sheriff's department, anybody who's been in HR, you know this. When you get a W-2, you look at your W-2 state, there's a box on there called Box Thirteen. And, uh, when Commissioner Jones made that thing, we losing all kinds of, let me tell you something about that. Sales taxes are not taxable. I mean, seriously, you cannot tax services, so you're losing money, Commissioner Jones, what I'm telling you. Services are not taxable. Now, if you look at Box Thirteen, look at how many city officials got, take home vehicles, how many county, how many board vacation. If you put that in Box Thirteen, they would be paying more taxes, because you have to take the value that they are receiving and not paying anything on it. That's called a perk. You have to understand that, you, so when somebody comes and says, "We're having a hard time," think about the African-American community, live there every day. Just try being black two and a half hours, and you'll see. So, you had information on those three budgets, we're gonna come back on, I, I think I told, uh, uh, when we met with the team the other day with Madam Clerk, it'll be the twenty-sixth. But wh- when we could not get the answer we were looking at, it, it was troubling. Gasly, the governmental county standards board, Farby, the financial county standards board, require, you have to let the public know, and Governor Roy Barnes' law made it clear, you cannot come up with a backdoor increase. That's two and a half mil we got to pay forever. Think about that, and, and, and now, again, don't hold me this, 'cause I don't remember who it was, but one of those, uh, European superstars, may have been Ashley Simpson or somebody, but in that movie, she told you, showed you what happened, well, entertainment manifests, uh, real life, and this is what we have here, cluelessness. We have to do better. Now, we'll come back, we're on the twenty-sixth, and, uh, Commissioner Gaines, one thing we're gonna ask you again to do this, is give your compadres on the city and the board education, so we can look at this, 'cause we got all eight of these governments, and all of them are doing well, except, uh, I, we checked, not a single one on the list of fastest shrinking cities in America, not a single one. As a matter of fact, uh, one thing about Savannah, they got one employer that provides sixteen thousand jobs, the airline company, Gulfstream, one employer. And then we get a new gas station, and somebody writes a story, talking about, you come and turn around, oh, the gas station, get rid of it. Thank you. If there are any questions here.
All right, thank you, Ms. Wright. Any other delegations that did not previously sign up, the wish to be heard at this time? Got in a total two items taken care of this morning. All right, let's move on with the agenda of purchases. Recommendation to accept the quote to install playground equipment at Radium Overlook Park for the Public Works Department for the lowest quoted vendor, Game Time out of Longwood Corner, the amount of twenty-six thousand nine hundred sixty dollars and four cents. Three vendors provided quotes with the highest being forty thousand two hundred thirty-three dollars and thirty-four cents. Funding is budgeted in clause seven. County parks improvement slash equipment. Mr. Addison.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, everyone. Um, this purchase, uh, will provide for a, a playground, um, at Overlook Park there, adjacent to the workout equipment station, and the equipment will be similar to the equipment out at Pine Glen Park. We're getting a lot of, uh, of traffic out at, uh, Radium Springs, and we think this would be a, a vital part of that park.
Any city incumbents, questions, or discussion? Just, um, a parenthetical comment, if you've not been out at Radium Springs lately, it's worth going out there. Uh, the trail is coming in very nicely, um, looks good. Rode my bike on it a bunch the other day, it's very nice. All right, uh, thank you. Now, move on, um, to board appointments. Uh, Madam Clerk, did you have anything to add, other than, these are the board appointments? Okay. All right, Albany-Darty Land Bank, three incumbents with a two-year term ending July 31st, 2023. Incumbents Thelma Adams-Johnson, Jim Pace, and Larry Thomas, desire reappointment. Two new applicants, Darlene Price and, uh, Will Reese. Any comments, questions, or discussion on that item? Okay. Aspire Behavioral Health and Developmental Disability Services Board, one appointment with a three-year term ending June 30th, 2024. Uh, incumbent Dr. Eugene Sherman desires, uh, reappointment. Two new applicants, Joe Austin and Amber Marshall. Uh, see Board Packet, page number nine. Any comments, questions, or discussion on that item? Madam Clerk, for some reason, I thought that this board appointment was, that there was gonna be more than one position open on this, but I feel clearly I'm wrong. Um, is there another term that's coming up?
For the Aspire Board?
Correct.
I can re-verify for you.
If you don't mind, let me know. Um, I, I'd just like to know, thank you. All right, Department of Family and Children's Services, one appointment with a five-year term ending June 30th, 2026. Incumbent Dr. Carolyn Hand desires reappointment. One new applicant, Rosalyn Fowler-Flickens. Any comments, questions, or discussion? Economic Development Commission, two appointments with a two-year term ending July 31st, 2023. Incumbent Chris Hatchery and Commissioner Clinton Johnson desire reappointment. This position held by a commissioner is appointed by the chairman. Um, two new applicants, Fred Gigliari and Cedric Jackson. See Board Packet, page number thirty-one. Mr. Gigliari was on the FIB board.
Hospital, yeah, hospital.
All right, any comments, questions, or discussion? All right. Tax Assessor's Board, one appointment with an unexpired three-year term ending December 31st, 2023. Incumbent Warren Grant relocated outside Darty County. Two new applicants, George Anderson and Darlene Price. See Board Packet, page number forty-five. Any comments, questions, or discussion?
Is that the George Anderson?
Huh? You guys need to work for us?
Yeah.
Yes, sir, George Anderson.
It, I mean, one, one question, just hypothetically, and I, I'm not making judgment on, on George's appointment, uh, to this board, is there any conflict of interest with him being the pr- the prior assessor and now getting on the board?
I think if he's, I think if he's retired, there's not.
Uh, okay. That's true.
So. All right, additional business. Recommendation to declare the listed vehicles and equipment in surplus and authorize the disposal of or sale of same via an online action, auction. Mr. Addison.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, this is our, um, our favorite surplus when we, um, request equipment.
Okay. Comments, questions, discussion? If any, none of this, move on. Recommendation to declare the listed si- equipment in surplus and authorize the disposal of same. This is a listing of equipment damaged by water in the judicial building for the sheriff's office. Mr. Addison.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is, uh, equipment that we're tracking separately as a part of the claim for the water damage.
Understood. Any comments, questions, or discussion?
Hey, one quick question, with, especially with number A, things that aren't water damaged, um, what do we do if we take the stuff to an online auction and it doesn't sell? Just dispose of it?
We have a yard sale.
We could either relive.
We set up a booth outside the courthouse.
At that point, we can dispose of it, you know, if we don't get any interest.
I just didn't know if there was a way to just, you know, have a, uh, ongoing list on the, the Darty County website of, you know, things you can get for five dollars, uh, you know, just whatever somebody's willing to pay for it, if it doesn't sell on the online auction.
We generally get a pretty big audience on the online auctions.
Good deal. All right. Uh, recommendation to accept the annual cooperative agreement with Turner Job Corps Center in Darty County outlining the assistance of the Darty County Police Department performing law enforcement duties. Morning, Chief Johnson.
Good morning, good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, this is the M U that's down annually, where Darty County Police will provide assistance to turn, turn, turn a job for on a needed basis.
Very good. Any comments, questions, or discussion? Okay. All right, next, um, recommendation from the Finance Committee to amend the fiscal year 2022 budget for the general fund in the amount of fifty-nine million two hundred sixteen thousand nine hundred seventy-nine dollars in the special services district budget amendment, in the amount of eight million six hundred three thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars. Uh, this matter has been addressed by the Finance Committee, and I understand is the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee, following a lot of deliberation that has taken place, uh, and that has, um, been in, uh, cooperation, very collaborative cooperation with the Sheriff's Department. Uh, in light of that, uh, any comments, questions, or discussion that we need on this issue? Any further?
Yes, please.
Yes, Commissioner Gaines?
Um, I would like to see the figures and the line items that increased.
I would like to see the figures and the line items that are increased.
Yes, ma'am. Can we get that to Commissioner Gaines, please?
Yes, I should read your packet on the last two pages. Your question, uh, entitled, Joe, one resignation.
There's a special services district budget amendment requested.
And, um.
Mr. Chairman, just, and, and just for my clarification, and the, Ms. McCoy, in the, in the writing, it says, recommendation from the Finance Committee to amend FY twenty-two budget for the general fund in the amount of, uh, the amendment is actually the amount of three million, one hundred twenty-nine thousand, wrapping in the amount of fifty-nine million?
Yes, the, uh, amended amount would be fifty-nine million, two hundred sixteen thousand, nine hundred.
I, I understand the distinction you're making.
Yeah, it's very minor. It's just in the way, in the way it reads.
Oh.
It almost makes it look like we're increasing the budget by fifty-nine million dollars, which is not what, but that clarification is well, well-taken.
It.
We could, we could.
I, I would like to, uh, point out that, um, we, we've done collectively a lot of work since this was brought to our attention, uh, back on, uh.
Wednesday, June twenty-third, by the Sheriff's Department and their critical staffing situation.
Uh, at the Finance Committee on the thirtieth, we talked about amending the budget and increasing the utilization of, uh, the reserve, uh, fund balance. Since the, the thirtieth of June, uh, we put our visionary cap on, and now we're proposing to use, uh, our A R P money. We have eight million dollars sitting in the bank. This is an eligible expense to provide premium pay for eligible essential employees. We discussed this at the Finance Committee, I mean, we were talking about a potential property tax, uh, increase as well as, uh, uh, appropriated more fund balance for the, for the adjustment of, uh, the military in, uh, in, in, uh, probably a year from now. As I say, in the Finance Committee meeting, uh, this recognition, uh, if you support the approval, then do so knowing that there will need to be a military adjustment, uh, in the future. As we are affecting about two, three hundred and sixty-two positions with this increase, uh, with the, uh, pay increase. And the O two are not getting a pay increase, will receive a thousand dollar month sum distribution. And then we have the, um, the classification and compensation study that's going to take place over the next six months. And once we get that data, the remaining, assuming we have six hundred and fifty employees, the remaining two thirty-eight, their salary will be adjusted. And so that will be an additional expense, but, uh, we are recommending using our A R P funds to fund this, uh, expense.
Understood, and, uh, needs to happen, and I'm very thankful for all of the commissioners' hard work. If I can get this out, Commissioner Gaines, I'll call you in one, one second. Very thankful for the Finance Committee, very thankful to the sheriff, uh, for his staff and, and working with those hand in hand. This is an important pay raise that has been a long time coming, uh, and been developed in a collaborative fashion. So, Commissioner Gaines?
Yes, thank you. Um, a question about the staffing levels in the departments, I guess, EMS and jail and sheriff's office and the N B A's office. Have the staffing levels pretty much remained the same over the years, or? Is some of this, uh, or have we seen a decrease? I know that the jail population has gone kind of down for the most part, uh, from its height maybe several years ago. But are the staffing levels pretty much blacked?
Yes, ma'am. When you, you fund, uh, these departments, you fund, uh, fully, uh, staffed levels of employment. For instance, V C P has about fifty employees, and so the issue here is the vacancy rate. Uh, vacancy rate in particular, uh, has been high in public safety, but in particular at the Darty County Jail. And so the salary adjustments, uh, we, uh, intend to improve our chances in this tight labor market. So, we're competing against, uh, other entities, uh, and our current staffing, uh, our, our current pay is not competitive at all.
I mean, I get that. I was just asking whether or not, um, there were any staffing, uh, increases in any of these figures.
No.
No, it's all head count neutral.
Okay. Uh, well, if, if the staffing in some of these departments has been below authorized levels, uh, I'm assuming then that money has come back into, flowed back into the general fund as a result of that.
That is correct.
Okay.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, one thing. I'd just like to go back even further than what Mr. McCoy said when, um, Mr. Ed Walls was here. And we had, uh, a zero, uh, line item for any kind of, uh, incentive for employees. And so I'd just like to commend the, uh, the Finance Committee as well as this board, because when I know we have six hundred and fifty employees, and you can correct me if you like, I think we probably have about six percent of African-Americans that work for the county. And I see this as helpful. I see you guys going back, uh, not overlooking that zero and coming up with a plan. And I appreciate that visionary, because I know that I talk to, uh, county employees all the time. One particular employee I know that has been here over thirteen years and pretty much at the same pay. So, I'm, I'm excited that we're gonna go forward with this, uh, this pay study that Mr. McCoy and the Finance Committee is after, because I think they deserve, uh, this longer wait, even though we've given them little tidbits, but. And I think even here, it's probably a bandage, uh, on this, on this particular situation, because we've been out of bounds a long time. And so with this pay study of actually bringing our county in line, and so I'd just like to, you know, tip my hat that we did not overlook it. You did hear what we said. They deserve, uh, something, and I think you did that. And I know that with the Sheriff's Department, uh, the county police, um, you know, the Public Works, all of those departments are very well-deserving. And even down to what I would say, my clerks, when I say clerks, like the libraries or the lady working, the tag department, all of those are sufficient department. And I appreciate you coming up with an idea to make this happen, because again, whether we look at it, whether we want to face it or not, even down to Mr. Wright coming this morning, we have about six percent of African-Americans that work for the county. So, and I think we doing a just job in that particular area. And so, again, I'd just like to tip my hat, you know, Mr. Newsom, Johnson, and, uh, Russell, uh, and even the sheriff, uh, being able to be receptive, uh, the county police being receptive, of, of having a conversation. And coming up with a, a solution right now, and then, you know, we're not gonna stop right here. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Really quick, can, may I ask that the sheriff come down and address a couple of issues as far as your, uh, understaffing to jail and where those costs kind of come out to be in the long run? Please. I think the full commission kind of needs to hear this information.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Appreciate all of you. To Ms., uh, Commissioner Gloria Gaines's question earlier, we currently have forty-four vacancies with the Darty County Sheriff's Office, and thirty-four of those being in the jail. We have closed five of our fifteen pods and reduced our inmate population as much as we can, uh, to the point we're working with Judge Lockett, our chief spirit court judge, and John Stevens, our state court judge, and they've been instrumental in helping us remove some of our population. We're getting to the point now with our staffing shortage that I've asked Chief Ostrander to call jails around the state on potentially having to move some of our inmates, uh, to other jails because of our staffing shortages. Where at once we had two men or women on the floor in a jail with eighty inmates, we're now moving one man or woman from one side to the other, from A to B, so to speak, and it's a security issue. I don't want to reduce my inmates, my men and women, to come out down to hardly any time at all. They get anywhere from two to four hours a day to come out of their cells to be in general population. And with the, uh, with the protocols we have in place, we're having to reduce their time coming out more. And all of that's gonna do is make it worse on my staff because of the issues they're gonna have to deal with. You know, these men and women are already locked up. We want to try to give them as much movement as we can without having to restrict that. But with my staffing shortage and my staff, uh, having to face forty-something percent of mental health, uh, inmates, uh, I showed a video clip to the Finance Committee of some incidents that we had with our staffing being attacked. And, and, and we, we can't continue to go at this pace. So, that's, that's, that's one of the issues with the staffing shortage, and I don't know if I was clear with that or not.
And, and the cost to, to take these inmates to other facilities was about what per year?
Uh, it's gonna be around a million dollars or so per year, and that's just to move a minimum amount. We may have to end up moving more. Thank you.
All right, very good. Thank you. Thank you, Sheriff.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
All right.
One last comment on that, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank, uh, Administrator McCoy, uh, for, for his work really diving down into the A R P funds and coming up with what is a, uh, a, a very solid interpretation of the use of these funds. And that can help us solve problems, uh, versus continuing to throw, um, you know, general fund dollars at problems. You know, where can we be creative and use these things, but feel confident that, um, even though the, the final word isn't, uh, isn't printed from the federal government on, on the use of these funds, uh, well, the A R P, um, funds, um, that we feel very confident that these, uh, this use will not put us in, under any type of scrutiny. So, thanks for, thanks for doing a lot of homework, Mike.
I agree with you. In, in my reading of the American Rescue Plan, this is a legitimate use of it. And my, my curiosity is if we can use it for the next, uh, budget cycle, you know?
We're good to the end of twenty-twenty-four.
We have to spend it by, oh, by the end of twenty-twenty-four?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, maybe we can get through the next budget cycle.
And I like to tip my hat to Mr. McCoy as well. I, I tell you, he's a hard-working county administrator, and he does, he puts a lot of work in, and he puts it in his heart, and, uh, and, and thank you so much for, for, for taking that deep dive into those funds, because you said you'd come back with us, and, and I think the best investment that we can ever make is in our folk.
But, I mean, you just read it, and it says that you can do it. It's not a big deal to figure that out.
Right, but still give him credit, Commissioner Gaines, still give.
Just read the thing.
Still give him credit. I mean, give, give the county administrator credit for his work.
I mean, just read it.
I don't know where they're going with this.
All right, let's come to order. Thank y'all. Uh, very good. Moving on. Mr. McCoy?
Yes, I want to remind everybody, uh, Thursday at ten a.m., we have the Ripley schedule at Rock Cross Park.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Lee?
Nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Let everybody know that Commissioner Edwards's birthday is coming up this week. He'll be twenty-two years old. Yep.
Twenty-two.
July fifteenth. Commissioner Edwards, it's your birthday, but I'll let you go first. You have anything, sir?
Yeah, a little smile or something. Oh, I was going to try to hold it a little bit, uh, but I just wanted to air it out real quick on, in future references, right? I'm looking at my, my older brother over there. With the proclamations, okay, when we doing those proclamations, if one of you, uh, the commissioners from that particular district, if we can start, uh, putting our names on those proclamations, along with yours, where, change the template where you're in the middle. And whoever requests that, uh, proclamation, because it's part of, to me, it's part of our legacy. And in this case, like Ms. James this morning, Commissioner Jones, uh, she lives in his district, and I've probably been friends with them since I was a baby, so I'll say.
I think that's easily.
So, I don't.
I think, I think that's something easy for us to accommodate. We talked to Mr. Lee about that, um.
Well, that's the wrong person to talk to, but I'm just. No, go ahead. Well, that's what I want to, I want it to be aired out, that, in future references, right? That you're, uh, Mr. Lee understands that.
All right. Anything else with, uh, Commissioner Edwards' birthday, boy?
Nah, it ain't birthday, but, but, yeah, go ahead. But that's what I, I really wanted that to be aired out.
I don't think that's much to air out. I think that's just an easy.
Yeah, I thought it wasn't either, uh, but now we, 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 is, everybody know my feelings about that.
We got your feelings.
Okay.
All right. Let's move on. Commissioner Newsom?
Uh, nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Hi. Commissioner Gaines?
Nothing, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Jones?
Uh, no, no, Mr. Chairman, not at this time.
All right, Commissioner Gray?
Uh, nothing further, thank you.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, sir. Uh, I want to say, he out, out of room now, but I was on Guillermo Road coming from, uh, n- nothing fancy Catfish House, right? And some trees had fell in the road, and one of our officers from Darty County Police was actually out there removing huge limbs from the road, making sure there was no accident, that people didn't, you know, it would come at the dark, so people were able to still have a very safe, safe trip. I think his name was, uh, Hawthorne, but I may be, I may be wrong. Asked Chief Johnson to get in contact with him and thank him, and he didn't know anything about pay raises, but he was still out there doing a really good job. Out in our community. I just wanted to say thank you to Darty County Police for that.
Very good. Thank you.